Buenas and half a day, everyone. This public hearing by the Committee on Child Welfare, Youth Affairs, Senior Citizens, Women's Affairs, Disability Services, The Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation, and Nagatna Restoration is hereby called to order. Today is Monday, February 24, 2025, and the time now is 9:02. For the record, and in accordance with the open government law, notices for this hearing were sent on February 17 and again on February 19. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the Guam Legislature website and the Guam Public Notice website. Seduzmasi, everyone that is here on the floor. Before we proceed with the discussion, I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct for those in attendance. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staffs with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Those testifying will be allowed to present written or oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the committee or myself. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the nature of the agenda, and current agenda is the appointments of Donna W. Klopenberg, Saina Francisco B. Rabon, and Peter R. Onodera to serve as members of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency, Board of Directors. The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify, and before speaking, individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their names for record purposes. Personal interference about the character or motive of any senator or any individuals testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room for this proceeding. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form or decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and may be asked to leave or be escorted and removed from the room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room. The Guam Council of Arts on Arts and Humanities Agency was established in 1967 by the late Dr. Pedro Sanchez under the University of Guam and was called the Insular Arts Council, or IAC. In 1972, through Executive Order 7523, the late Governor Ricardo J. Bordalio reestablished the Insular Arts Council as part of the executive office in 1975. Public Law 18-8 was enacted to ensure CAHA's perpetual existence in support of the arts on Guam. Guam CAHA's programs are numerous and include the issuance of grants to individuals and organizations for the perpetuation of the arts and culture of our island, such as folk arts projects, visual arts display and exhibits, and music and theater productions, to name a few. Some of the responsibilities of CAHA's board directors includes the preparation and submission of an annual budget to the governor and the legislature, the application for the acceptance of federal funds for the arts and humanities, and hiring of personnel, formulation of policies, and to act as an advisor to the governor concerning the arts and humanities. At this time, I would like to call upon the following individuals who signed to testify. First, let me call the three appointees. Let's, because since we have almost the same people who will testify, let me call in the panel first the three appointees. First, Ms. Donna W. Klopenberg. Please sit in the panel. Mr. Peter Onodera, please sit next to Ms. Donna. And lastly, Saina Francisco Rabon.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call testimonies, and I would like to start with the CAHA director, Ms. Angie Taitogui. You may state or read your testimonies, please. And I know that you are here to testify on behalf of our three appointees. You may do so now. Thank you.
Madam Chair, half a day to our nominees here. Half a day and good morning. I did submit a written or a testimony, and it is quite lengthy, but I'll just make this one pretty short, and I will speak from the heart. I got, 10 years ago, I became a part of CAHA. I got to meet Donna, Master Saina Frank Rabon, and Master Peter Onodera. I got to meet them in a way where I didn't not know what the master program was and what was it all about. In knowing now, 10 years later, what their roles are, and what their duties, and what the master is all about, I've learned a lot from them. And Madam Chair, we'd like to highly recommend that the two masters to be appointed, be nominated, and pointed onto our board of directors. Ms. Donna Klopenberg, I met her as well 10 years ago. She is very instrumental in CAHA. She has given us a wealth of knowledge. And when I say us, me and the staff, advice, and she has supported us in many of our activities as well. And she is the inspiration, as well with the Saina Rabon. We're bringing back the master's program, and currently in the motion is our Maga Haga Award, which we are bringing back up. And now that if, once Master Peter Onodera is on board, hope, you know, which I doubt he will not, we then will have a very tremendous panel to succeed in bringing up all the master's program and the Maga Haga Award where it should be. Okay, I think that's my five minutes rate? I would like to also say, as in what I've written up, that Donna has inspired us here with getting all of our programs and everything done. During our board meetings, she's ensured that things are done. She is currently the secretary for CAHA board, and she really reads everything that is translated onto the board documents and makes sure that what is said is correct. As of Saina Rabon, Master of Dance. I've gotten to meet him and know him. I've heard of him in the early '80s, who he was and what, but never really knew him until I, CAHA. His, you just have to know him to be who he is, to see who he is. His advice, his knowledge, especially with Fespac, is one of the ones thing that I think I and the CAHA staff really take for heart. He's, you know, we listen to him. We use his words and what he says to us as a guiding tool when it comes with Fespac. When we have a question, I pick up the phone and I call him. If he, if he's not able to talk to us, guaranteed 20 minutes later, he will call back. If I miss a call, he'll call one of the staff saying, you know, there was a message left. He has never failed us in any of that point. Now, Mr. Master Peter Onodera. I met him, I knew of him when I first came onto CAHA, but didn't really know who he was. But I had the opportunity of working with him during Fespac, the 13th Festival of the Pacific Arts. I watched how he worked and what he did. What was so instrumental with him was that he was provided boards. He would start off every morning the word of the day. And then all of the other countries and islands would have to put in, if he said "half a day" or "good morning", they had to write in their own native tongue a "good morning" segment or... And then it just went on and on in the line. I was just watching how he was. I got to meet, I didn't know him then, but I did watch one of his shows way back when he was, his organization that he had. And I didn't really know Chamorro back then, but just the motions and the action of this Chamorro play that him and his organization then did was so touching. You just knew when he was, when they were doing it, what it meant. But I would like, Madam Chair, to highly recommend all three be placed on the CAHA Board of Directors Board.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Director Angie Taitogui.
Seduzmasi.
And this, at this time, I would like to call another person who would like to render their testimony to the three appointees, Ms. Monica Guzman. Please come. Ms. Monica, we welcome your testimony, whether it's heartfelt like Ms. Angie's or you can read your testimony, your choice.
Buenos, good morning, Senator Calvo. And congratulations on having our confirmation hearing this morning for the nominees to the Board of Directors of the Guam Council on Arts and Humanities. I am Monica O'Kata-Guzman, Chairperson of the Board of Directors. Imagine a world without art or an island without culture. Such a scenario would be a nightmare. As Chair of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities, CAHA, along with my fellow board members, staff, and management, we work tirelessly to ensure that we have a thriving arts community and a lasting legacy of our unique culture and traditions. It is an honor today to support the nominations of three individuals who have devoted their lives to these very pursuits: Mrs. Donna Klopenberg, Saina Francisco Rabon, and Saina Peter Onodera. I have known all three of these exceptional nominees for many years. We have served together on multiple boards, both public and nonprofit, and have collaborated on numerous events that highlight the rich arts and culture of our island. They are all driven by a genuine passion for their work, and they are unwavering in their commitment to leave a better world for our residents. Mrs. Donna Klopenberg. Donna will tell you she is not an artist, but rather a devoted supporter and patron of the arts. In her work with the many organizations she is involved in, she continually advocates for the support of our local artisans and practitioners. This advocacy elevates the standard of life that art brings into our daily lives. Donna's years of service with the Guam Women's Club, Guam Symphony Society, and her long tenure on the CAHA board, I believe this is her fourth round, provide her with an unmatched perspective. While she might describe herself as old school, it is often that very mentality rooted in tradition that is needed to ensure the proper growth and sustainability of our cultural institutions. Her business acumen and vast experiences are invaluable assets to CAHA, especially in today's unpredictable environment. Francisco S. N. Rabon. Master of Chamorro Dance, Frank Rabon has dedicated his life to the perpetuation of Chamorro culture. Through his leadership at Pa'aa Ta'utautano and Para'i Pobetzeni Ta'uta, he has played an instrumental role in creating and nurturing the growth of Chamorro dance, not only here in Guam, but across the Marianas and within our diasporic communities, including Japan. His perseverance and impact is evident in the many young people today who proudly speak the Chamorro language, chant the hymns, dance, and embrace their cultural heritage. Saina Rabon's collaboration with our educational institutions and his efforts to train more Chamorro teachers in our schools further solidify his deep commitment to preserving our traditions. His adherence to purist Chamorro ideals ensures that our cultural heritage remains intact for generations to come. Pedro Onodera, master storyteller. Peter Onodera is a literary artist of unmatched skill. Long before it became popular, Peter was writing Chamorro plays. I think he's written over 100 Chamorro plays. And his commitment to the Chamorro language is reflected in his extensive body of work, including plays, books, and poetry. His work is not only a testament to his artistic skill, but also to his profound love for all things Chamorro. I have had the distinct pleasure of working closely with Peter as a member of GVB's Cultural Heritage Committee, as well as through the Guam Ni'kay Association and his participation as Fespac. His contribution to our cultural landscape is invaluable, and his continued efforts to share and preserve our stories in the written word are essential for future generations. Both Mrs. Klopenberg and Saina Frank are renewing their terms in the CAHA board, and their contributions to date are exemplary. Saina Peter is returning to the board, having served many years ago. Their wisdom, insight, and perspective will be invaluable to the work of CAHA as we move to implementing the agency's strategic plan. In conclusion, it is with great confidence that I support the nominations of Mrs. Donna Klopenberg on our two Masters of Traditional Arts, Master Frank Rabon of Chamorro Dance and Peter Onodera, master storyteller, to serve on the CAHA board. Each of them brings a unique perspective, skill set, and unwavering dedication to the arts and culture of Guam. I have no doubt they will continue to play an integral role in ensuring that our arts community thrives and that our culture remains strong for generations to come. It will be an honor to work with them to uphold CAHA's missions, and their insights will further enrich its work. Thank you for consideration of these outstanding giants in our community. Their contributions would undoubtedly strengthen CAHA's impact on Guam's arts and culture and would reinforce the significance of their nominations. I urge you to positively confirm Donna, Frank, and Peter to serve in the Board of Directors of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities as soon as possible.
Seduzmasi, Ms. Monica, for your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to render their testimony on behalf of our three appointees? Madam, please approach the panel. And please state your name for the record.
Half a day. My name is Jackie Baubus, and I'm a program coordinator for at CAHA. I've actually been there the longest out of all the employees have. So I'd like to thank you all, Madam Chair and Senator Duñez, for giving me this opportunity to speak today. Quite honestly, I was not prepared. I'm actually not prepared. I just want to speak off the cuff. When I first started at CAHA, I was in my twenties, and I've aged so much more. But I had the opportunity to work with all these three individuals throughout my career at CAHA. And I will start with Senot Onodera. When I first started, he was actually on the CAHA board. Ms. Monica and the director spoke to, you know, what they do and their value to the community. So I guess what I'm going to tell you is maybe more of a personal effect on myself. So when I first met Senot Onodera, I got scoted, quite frankly, because I am Chamorro, but it's sad to say I don't speak the language, you know, fully. I, aptly, when I speak. He would always tease me about that. But through his efforts, I can tell you the Chamorro language has, you know, there's a movement. People, young people are taking the interest to learn the language. And I can say that for a fact because my son and my grandchildren speak better than I do. Then for Ms. Donna. I've known Ms. Donna since the Bordalio-Gutierrez administration. That was her first round at CAHA. So I can tell you that she's a very good businesswoman, so she brings that knowledge to the table. I've had the opportunity to work with her through all her terms as a board member, and I can honestly say that she stands her ground. She will speak her mind. But that's all good, because we need that. We need board members who will speak truthfully and honestly about whether, what it is, whether they're entertaining a grant or a program of CAHA, because we need that. As an agency, we need to grow, and we're here to service the people of Guam, right, to bring them the arts and culture, make it stronger. Like Ms. Monica said, imagine a world without art. What people don't understand is really, art is impactful. It is a part of our daily lives, whether it's speaking the language or looking at a painting. It's everywhere. So it makes, it contributes to a person's well-being. And as for Senot Rabon, when I first met him, he was a grantee at CAHA. And I can say that he's probably had, Senot, maybe 16 grants, right? He went into the schools at that time, and he was teaching dance. And this was a time when people really didn't know much about Chamorro dance or the language. So his program in itself is very strong too, because not only does he teach the dance, but he promotes the language there too. So I can say with Senot Frank's movement, it's grown. I mean, you see all the houses in Guma's under his umbrella. And I think that's good. Being a Chamorro, it's all great. But, you know, I do support other cultures. I believe that's important. But because we're in Guam, you know, that should be a priority. But I admire and I respect all the individuals here on the table today. And I think, as, you know, my term at CAHA will event eventually because I've been there for more than 36 years. But I can say that they've added to my life. They contributed to it. I'm not an artist at all. I can only draw probably stick figures. But I learned to truly appreciate the language, the arts, and the culture. So I think that by having them come to the board again, Senot after a long period, Frank and, Senot Frank and Ms. Donna, I think the CAHA board will be stronger. And I think they'll be able to, you know, push forward programs and make arts a priority because we need to do that. And we need to find ways to infuse monies into the arts, right? We just need to do that. And I think these are the leaders that we need. So thank you again for giving me this opportunity. And my apologies, Senator Ada, for not acknowledging you when you sat down. But like I said, I'm just speaking off the cuff. These people, I truly admire them and I respect them. And they do mean a lot to me. I think through the years that, you know, we've grown to know each other. Thank you again.
Seduzmasi, Ms. Jackie. Before we proceed with further testimonies, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, Senator Chris Duñez and, of course, my vice-chair, Senator Tony Ada. At this point, is there anyone else that would like to render testimony? Is Mr. Noah Sablon going to, is he present? Are you going to render your testimony, sir? Please, please approach the panel and state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Noah Sablon, and I am a program coordinator at Guam CAHA. So I came to CAHA last year. So I haven't been with CAHA too long, but I do know for a fact that for the short time, short time I've been working with them, that these individuals here are very knowledgeable and they support the arts. And, yeah. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noah. At this point, may I ask Mr. Mark Duñez to approach the panel? If, are you going to render your testimony, sir?
Hi. Buenos and half a day, Senator Shelly Calvo, Christopher Duñez, and Vice Speaker Tony Ada. Thank you for the opportunity. I didn't write a testimony, however. I've been at CAHA for 19 years now. And having to work with these fine artists and very professional people here on our island, I can say that my experience and having the opportunity to hear their practice and ethnic work with the board, they bring tremendous experience and knowledge to our programs at CAHA. They fight for the arts and humanities. They are transparent. They're willing to move CAHA forward with our programs and many new programs in the future. They have the passionate about the arts and humanities on what they do. They're going to move CAHA forward with... They're going to move Kaha forward with the many good ideas that bring to the table. I too am passionate about the arts humanities, as you can see, been there 19 years and, you know, hopefully for another 10 years or so. I believe in the arts, like Monica Guzman said, imagine a world without arts. We are all artistic in our ways. Imagine Guam, let me give you a scenario. Remember when Guam was nothing but just jungle around? And as people here, we build infrastructure, and with the folks who have experience in creative thinking, now look at Guam now, it's a gem. So with our creative thinking minds, we wouldn't be seeing Guam as it is today with the many beautiful culture, infrastructure, arts around everywhere we go. This is why arts is really important. So thank you for the opportunity to testify to these three wonderful art members. I'm sure with their continued support, they will continue to move our agency's mandate as it should be. Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Appreciate your testimony. At this point, if there's no other people that will be testifying, I'm going to move the floor to questions. I would like to recognize again my colleagues for any questions or remarks to those in attendance. I ask that my colleagues be mindful of the five minutes allotted to them for questions. I am going to start with my Vice Chair, Mr. Tony Ada, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have questions, just comments, and I'd just like to thank again Senor Rabon and Ms. Klappenberg for coming and getting reappointed to the, to the board. I think it's very important that we keep, you know, moving forward with the culture and arts. And for Mr. Onodera for coming on board. Senor Onodera, you know, it's great to have you on board, and I believe that if I'm right, Ms. Tidgway, would this make the, complete the board, or is there any other vacancies?
We still have vacancies, sir.
If you can come to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Vice Speaker Ada, we, we still have vacancies. We, I have been going out basically and searching and calling. You know, the response I get is, I'll think about it. As you know, we have all of our SINAs, we have a group of SINAs. What I want to do basically is have a mix and a match. I do know that, Madam Chair, that I believe I will be getting a youth representative that will make eight. Kaha's mandates indicates that there should be 13 Board of Directors. I believe we have seven right now, and then eight, then our youth will make nine, so I need, what, three more to go? I am looking for, with our SINA, and then I want to have that middle, younger age group, and those are the ones that I'm looking for at this time. That way, we have a mix, a mix in there of, you know, those that are learning, and then we have our guidance from our SINAs on the board, sir.
Yeah, thank you, and I think that's important so that we can start teaching the younger generations because eventually one day you wouldn't like to retire and just stay home and be with the families. But until then, thank you for your continuation of being on the Kaha board. This does not affect Quorum currently, does it?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
One thing, may I add, that I do want to say that one thing though with our Kaha board members that we currently have, they make it a point that if we're going to be short of Quorum, that they come. They come and get through it as quickly as possible, but no, it won't.
Thank you, ma'am. And again, thank you to the three for, once again, accepting the governor's reappointment, and also for accepting the governor's appointment to the Kaha board. I look forward to voting on your confirmation in our March session. So hopefully the committee reports can be completed and ready for our next session. But thank you again. We really appreciate your stepping up and being a part of the board at Kaha. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair of the Committee, Senator Tony Ada. And next, I will give the floor to an important man because you guys mentioned about funding, the chair appropriations, Senator Chris Duñez.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair. Then undangkuluna sidoos masi magait para si Senor Rabon, Senora Klappenberg, and Senor Onodera. Magufo, pago, na un li hamzun atres na masheta yepointementu ginini magahagan Guam. Sidoos masita alupareno. Thank you very much to all of you for coming this morning, and thank you for accepting the reappointment, Mr. Rabon and, and Mrs. Klappenberg, and also Mr. Onodera, thank you for being a returnee. So my question is going to be one question that's very simple, maybe more complicated than we think. Right now, year after year, when we get the report from the Guam Visitors Bureau, the main, one of the main topics that is mentioned by those who have visited Guam is the desire for more culture. And so I just wanted to get your views on the current status of what you believe, the interaction between Kaha and our cultural offerings, and maybe one or two improvements if you have any suggestions. So I'll start with Senor Rabon.
Is it okay for me to speak in the language, or I should speak?
Oh, can, kun sigi, ma.
An para Guam ne, anta harso tati, no? Tan ut zamoro esti xia, esti ge luga ta, no? Dipusi pa taputsigi eno xia na, na hinano, zan, zan kinalamtin. An para ta na fanhala mi bisita ginipas malan e ta fata igu na hata. Utungwa na bulaxan na tauta manasaya ginini ti zamoro. Notano zamoro esti, guinaha zamoro. I trust, it trustestai i tiningo ta man ginini manainata xia. Pesan para ta kumbidae bisita ne, pas malan ta fata edri i mastadung na guinaha. You know? For lack of better words, they talk about diversity. And, and yes, I totally believe in diversity, and equity, and inclusion. We also need to understand who are the indigenous people of the Marianas. And if we want to be unique in the world of plenty, especially tourism, then we need to focus on what makes us unique. And you don't find Chamorro people in Japan, or in China, or in the Philippines, or in Germany. Maybe a few that are living there, but you find a majority of them living in the Marianas. And that's what we need to focus. So if the tourism industry really wants to be effective, they should start working with their own house, supporting the beauty of what the Marianas is all about, and that's the Chamorro people. And not, that doesn't make you racist or discriminating, it just makes you a person that believes in who you are as Chamorro. That's what I, that's my take on tourism.
Sidoos masi, Senor, Senora Klappenberg.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and Senator Vice Speaker Ada, and Senator Duñez. I think I probably have a different perspective, maybe, being that our family business started out as totally tourism, and we've diversified through the years. Of course, the tourism industry has changed dramatically since COVID, and also since our typhoon, it has not rebounded, and that's no secret. I think we do have opportunities for people to engage. The days of the tour buses driving around with 52 or 60 people on, onboard and stopping here and there pretty much have stopped. There, there are a few. Most of the tourists now, as I understand it, they are renting their own cars and they're going places to see, for instance, the Valley of the Latte, or to go to Jeff's to enjoy lunch or dinner on the beach and other opportunities. But the biggest thing is, we need to concentrate and work with partners like GBB, and there are some others, to elevate our experience. And of course, that does take money and a lot of energy, ideas from everyone. At Kaha, I think, and we are still working on our strategic plan going forward, but if we take care of Kaha locally, and we develop our programs and take them out into the community, that's going to just enhance what we have to offer and show the local people and our partners what we're doing. Hopefully, that will feed down into the people that are still bringing tourists in, and so they're going to want to experience it. Next month, I believe there's opportunities for the tourists to experience, we just have to get the word out. The people that are here bringing the tourists in have to know what we're doing. And I think that's part of our job. I, I think we, we, you know, do through social media and things, I think it could be better. Obviously, there's always room for improvement, and I hope to see that. I'm anxious to, once again, get on board and get working. And I'm just going to throw this in, it wouldn't hurt for Kaha to move forward and have a permanent place, and that's another way that we could entice people, local and tourists alike, to come and enjoy the arts on Guam. Thank you.
Senor Onodera, kun sigi.
Sidoos masi. You know, as an ordinary citizen just sitting here, let me tell you that my biggest peeve through the years, and I think Ms. Monica Guzman can attest to the fact that when we both sat in the Chaco Committee of the Guam Visitors Bureau, I always advocated and proposed and perpetuated the use of the Chamorro language, and that continues to be on the wayside, so to speak. The lack of Chamorro language contributes immensely to the fact that the language, the indigenous language of the people of the island is indeed endangered, and it's now, maybe, I'm venturing to say, that it's nearing extinction already. And here I am, sitting here, witnessing this opportunity to perpetuate the arts and humanities on Guam. So let me concentrate a little bit on humanities, because we are an indigenous people here and so forth. The language is of the utmost importance, and I've been watching through the years, every year, including the elections that took place among the three, the two branches of government and so forth. And I cannot even recall if any of you, when you were running for senators, if any of your campaign signs or printed material in the media showed any Chamorro slogan or a word of anything in that respect. And I wrote about this as in a letter to the editor two years ago, when the gubernatorial election had just ended, and then we started to proceed with the legislative elections and so forth. Government of Guam agencies are certainly lacking in the use of the Chamorro language in promotions and anniversaries and activities and government of Guam events and what have you. And it continues to this very day, and here it is. I lament the fact that Chamorro month is coming up next month, for which we will be, possibly be in front of this board again for approval as members of the organization. And I plan that as sitting on the Kaha board, we need to continue to perpetuate the Chamorro language in every way possible. There's no two ways about it, but the Chamorro language has to live on in prosperity, and that to me is my peeve at this point in time. Sidoos masi.
Sidoos masi, hagulokui. You know, I, I agree with what you're saying, and I agree that it's really good to hear the perspectives from the three, because that's what we need in a board. You know, obviously, Senora Klappenberg's bringing forward, you know, the business aspect, that, that, you know, we've got a, we've got a model and we've got to be in touch. But certainly, the language, and I got to say, I was tourist during the summer because I had family that were here, and the Valley of the Latte is, is to me, one of the premier at this time. My, my family, we were visiting, being back home, some of them haven't been on Guam for a long time, and they really enjoyed all of the experiences, how we were brought through, and the discussion on the, you know, the flora and fauna, the fruits, the rivers, the, you know, all, all of the things, the latte, you know, our guma, I mean, all of those things were just really something that even when they lived here, you know, really wasn't front and center, huh? So I agree with you, and I, and I hope we just continue. And so that's where we, I think we really need to constantly see that synergy with, with GBB and, and with Kaha. And I know that, you know, there's been a lot of things that have been done, particularly in the area of promoting our businesses, and starting to try to get more local homegrown businesses that are, you know, basically doing things with our culture, such as our foods, carvings, you know, opportunities too for the southern villages, we need to expand on really accentuating their, their flora and fauna and, and just those stopbys, you know, to be able to really experiencing it and not just driving by, as was mentioned. You know, we have a lot of free independent travelers now, they can take the time, they don't have to be on a schedule to have to, you know, jump back on the bus. But, you know, the thing is, is that we need to continue to do that. I think that that is, outside of all the investments and outside of all the marketing and the things that we're doing going abroad, I believe that this is the one thing that can also reinvent us, that people know that they're coming here for an experience, an experience to, to learn something. In closing, Madam Chair, when I had a fortunate opportunity to visit Taiwan last year, going to the Presidential Palace, I was just amazed, you know, on all of the history of the Austrine cultures, and to walk through the Presidential Palace and to see Guam and the Marianas and everything throughout Micronesia that was featured in the discussion about the, the history. In fact, they basically claimed that one of their 19 chairs of all of the different cultural representation in Taiwan, actually, they claimed that one of those is, is very close to the Chamoros, and, and has a lot of similarities in some of the language, and certainly similarities in some of the habits in terms of how they live throughout the island. And so I was so taken aback to, to really get that in-depth immersion, that there's no question that the historical facts that exist within our region and our waters and our blue ocean out here, the connections are very, very tight, but there was no question that we were unique, as Senor Rabon talked about, unique for many, many reasons, and we need to preserve that. So that with that, Mr. Madam Chair, I'm so glad we have this compliment to be a returnee and also, you know, continuation. And I, I can see that they are going to push these initiatives forward, and we'll do everything we can working with you. Sidoos masi, Madam Chair.
Sidoos masi. Thank you, Senator Duñez. As your Oversight Chair, you'd be happy to know that my heart, my mind, and my soul is really to propel arts, culture, and language for our island. As a matter of fact, obviously, we cannot disclose it yet, there are things, projects, and efforts that are already in the works on our table to promote further our culture. And as Senator Duñez mentioned, this effort will be hand in hand with tourism as well, very much so. So you'll see a lot from the 38 legislature when it comes to preservation pushing our culture. Now, before we wrap up, I would like to have some questions thrown at you guys, not much, but I will start with Senor Rabon. Sir, as a board- Sir, as a board member, you will help shape the strategic direction of Kaha. We are curious about your ideas for future development and how you plan to ensure the arts and humanities continue to thrive on Guam. What are your priorities for the Guam Council of Arts, on arts and humanities during your next term, and what do you consider to be the most significant challenges facing the arts and humanities sector on Guam today?
First and foremost, I'm well aware that the Guam Council of the Arts and Humanities is equivalent to a state agency that all fifty states are afforded, you know, throughout, and funding comes that way, either through National Endowment of the Arts or National Endowment of the Humanities, or through other federal appropriations. And in those acts, resources, grants are available. Kaha also receives money through the percent of the arts in different situations. My role as a board member is to make sure that I support the staff in the programs that they've already developed and implemented, and as well as what you introduce, programs that might benefit or will benefit the agency throughout the community of Guam in terms of the arts. I know that Guam Council of the Arts and Humanities cannot be exclusive to a particular type of genre, because it is a state agency. So therefore, it cannot just completely focus on Chamorro language and culture, not unless there is a department that has been set aside to focus on those situation. But as it stands right now, it's a state agency, so therefore, it has to accommodate all art forms that happens on the island, be it traditional, be it visual, be it contemporary, be it folk, whatever. That's the purpose of Guam Council of the Arts and Humanities, and therefore, that's what I will support. So whatever programs they have, such as the Masters, and the Magahaga Award, and whatever other grant, I will work towards making sure that there's equity and balance in those programs, and find improvements towards it. Thank you.
For Ms. Donna. The Guam Council on Arts and Humanities require the board members have recognized professional interest and experience in the arts and humanities. This ensures that individuals appointed to the board have a deep understanding of these fields, contributing valuable expertise to the council's mission. How would you describe your professional interest in the arts and humanities, and how does this align with the requirement to have recognized experience in this field? Can you provide specific examples of your past work that demonstrate your commitment and contributions to the arts and humanities on Guam?
Well, let me say again, I'm not an artist, I'm not a musician, but I have a firm belief that everyone in the community, no matter how old or how young, has the opportunity to experience, see art, listen to the music, that we have a lot of organizations here now, the Guam Symphony, of which I'm a part of for the last twenty-plus years, and Guam Philharmonic. I attend a lot of these things, I've worked with these communities, I've done numerous fundraisers in support of Vespac, I've planned those, I've worked with artisans, I've done everything I can, short of picking up a paintbrush and playing the music, because I grew up in an artistic family, I don't know what happened to me, but that's why I'm here, I think that's why I'm here. I have a different perspective, and it's pretty daunting to sit between two masters and try and tell you, but I've known Peter for over fifty years, Frank, I've just gotten to know in the last few years, I know we work well together, I listen to them, because they know more than I do, but I think I bring a different perspective, and I will work with everyone to see that a Kaha moves forward, and I think it's especially important right now that we roll up our sleeves and get to work. I am, with the help of everyone on the board, I'm bringing back something that Kaha hasn't done in over twenty years, and that will be the Governor's Art Award, which we now know it as the Magahaga Award, that will be coming up in October. Another way to bring all the artists and other people in the community together, to work together, to promote arts and cultures for the community.
Thank you, Ms. Donna, appreciate that. Mr. Peter. As a board member, you will help shape the strategic direction of Kaha. We are curious about ideas for future development and how you plan to ensure that the arts and humanities continue to thrive on Guam. What are your priorities for the Guam Council on Arts and Humanities during your next term, and what do you consider to be the most significant challenges facing the arts and humanities sectors in Guam today?
As Donna mentioned, we know each other since over fifty years, because we were both high school graduates of the class of seventy-one from George Washington High School. And as a matter of fact, this Friday, we're going to be paying tribute to our principal at the time, who we, as students, rose up in arms and did the first-ever combined student demonstration on campus, and we're very proud of that, because we have designated ourselves as the red armband culprit, if you will. But nevertheless, I'm going to reflect a little bit on my high school days, because in my high school days, the school system was rich in music and band, and I want to find out what happened. I want to bring that back, if possible, because I was in choirs, and I even was selected in an old island honor choir and band to participate in the nineteen-seventy World Exhibition in Osaka, Japan. And we had marching bands in full uniforms throughout the two public high schools, JF, KNGW. We had choir competitions, we were in honor choirs that included public and the private schools too. I want to see all that happen, it's not just enough anymore with just poster and art competition, but I think music and drama and bands should be brought back into the school system, and that's my dream, because I fairly, I see that lacking. I've yet to attend a choir competition or a choral concert of sort. I used to sing in the Easter cantata at the Cathedral Basilica when I was still in high school and into University of Guam days and so forth. And yes, we have the cultural dance groups, but that can be added on with a little bit more of that aspect of music, if anything. And then, of course, I also want to expand a little bit more on the written word by encouraging novellas and writers and children's books, not just in Chamorro language, but as in all things with all other cultures on the island. And I've been a practitioner of many of my work, and I've been a grantee at Kaha, and I want to see that further expanded, and allowing more new faces, the opportunity to be given opportunities to perpetuate their work through the grants that they apply for. But that's from my own personal perspective that I would like to see a little bit of an expansion and so forth. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you. On behalf of my colleagues, Senator Chris Duñez and Vice Chair Senator Tonyada, we'd like to congratulate the three of you for your appointment, and our best of luck. Thank you to everyone that came to this public hearing, and to those who provided testimonies. The committee will continue to receive testimony. Please submit your testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature, or through email Again, I want to thank everyone and everybody for attending this public hearing and providing feedback. This public hearing is now adjourned at ten o'clock in the morning. Thank you.